I know, I figured I'd start asking now.
Yes. My stockings keep falling down.
So we only have four, now that I ask you. Um.
I want my seating arrangement.
Go ahead. Hands, left hand to God the Father. But I'll sit with the right hand of the Almighty. The Almighty just said.
You know, I felt there was a little power. I felt there was a power.
Oh, yeah. Somebody. Don't start a fire on the kids. Don't start a fire. And once it was in the years after. I asked my dad to send my dad a link to the bio. Right, right. I understand. And for I could clear his URL, so I, so I. And instead of. Like all of them.
How are you doing?
Uh, good.
This is a substitute version of a gun.
Oh, Tom. Sure, I forgot. I, um, heard that. The, uh, name change for QA was it four?
I'm sorry, I think we should just suspend the votes.
Can we just have it, if I make a motion just to bring it to the full board next month? Is that okay?
Get your votes lined up, basically we should put it on the agenda.
Cause I have it.
Put it as a new item.
Yeah.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Get your four votes, I think it'll be me, Alan, you.
Van and Lee.
And just make a motion, let's make a motion to suspend the votes for second day.
Okay.
Suspend the rules and cast this.
Yeah. Motion for next, for next month, put it under the new i- a new item.
There was a name change in four minutes.
Yeah. It's difficult. I know, I know. It's alright, I just. I heard about it and I'm like, okay, and so I'm like, okay, if I have to do something, it's today. I know, it's just a name change. And you know what, with CIGR, I was like, alright, whatever, but with this one, it's like, it truly is like, you're talking about widgets. Like, it's really. Anyway. Yay! Oh, this is my.
Today, it's today.
One, two, three, four. Kind of core, just the four of us. Just us lonely four today.
You look frustrated.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I don't really know where I can go. Yeah. We're not going to bring him up. I should talk to Luke. Oh, he's gone.
I got a blanket, man. Got, I mean, leave them. Look at this shit. I don't give a shit. But you have to understand. Your buddy will pass on buses again today, I think he's here.
Yeah, I guess. I just said. It should be great.
Wait, last on the agenda, so. Uh, we can return.
No, but, yeah. What's going on?
He's the very last. He's the very last speaker. Is this here? Six thirty, what time is Obama's meeting? Eight, nine?
Meeting of the Board of Education is now called to order. We have a quorum, so we will get started, and we will begin with item one on the agenda, the Act of Reverence and Pledge Allegiance to the Flag, and we will have it led by our student representative, Ms. De Los.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have. We have received minutes from the August 7th Board of Education meeting. Um, you all should receive them in your, have received them in your Friday packet, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes from August 7th, 2008, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, those minutes are approved. We don't have any speakers suggesting an agenda item, we will move to item number four, the superintendent's report, Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening. A few things to report tonight, and we have one quick presentation to the Board of Education. Of course, we've got a lot going on, preparing for schools to open next Wednesday, first day of classes. We have a number of things in place for, in terms of safety, in terms of curricula, in terms of even schools moving locations. We will publish to the community by early next week, all of our goals as a district, after the Board of Education actually receives those. We'll be outlining everything from grade three to grades eight in terms of ELA mathematics, as well as graduation rate projections for our next year. Before we jump into our presentation, I'd like to introduce two new cabinet members. One is gonna present with me in the presentation, and I'll be waiting for my human fo- youth resources folks to give me a couple of orders. But one individual we're very, very pleased to have on board as our new chief for youth development and family services, I believe her first day of work will be September 22nd, and her name is Gladys Pedraza Burgos, if you hear Gladys? Gladys comes to us from the University of Rochester School of Medicine and Dentistry, a native Rochesterian, grew up in the northeast part of town, what used to be called the children's zone. First in her family to have attended college, by the way. So we welcome her, and she'll bring some, some work to us in terms of guidance, youth development, family services, et cetera. The second person I'd love to introduce is one of our own, Dr. Jeanette C. Silvers, as the new chief of accountability, Jeanette, are you here? Jeanette has been in charge of research evaluation and testing for the last seven years, and she was a reading teacher in the district for over twenty-two years. So, homegrown, and a phenomenal person, and we'll talk a little bit today about what we are planning on doing this year, especially around accountability. We spent the past two days as a cabinet retreat, talking about some of this work. So what you'll see in the next five to ten minutes really is an overview of the work we did this afternoon in preparation for accountability. And I'll introduce the last two once we, once we finish, so if I may ask, the Board of Education, please take us on the outside.
Travis, we've been at all these, the wireless mics, and that's not working. As you know, we talked about your workforce, ADEA, Achievement Equity and Accountability. This is a big piece about reformer. You'll see in the next five quarters, we're hoping to accomplish in the next year too. Rolling this out, of course, this is coming in our school year. If you're actively with the two, the school, the school has asked for the scorecard, I think it would be better to set what we mean by accountability, making sure that what we do is transparent to this community. It's a great quote, that is Tumblebone, who was president of building in company. And when you read it, it's a book by those five times, the most popular by TV football. Do you think I do that, if there was no scorecard at the end of the year? Very often, in education or business, we do need to have clear, concrete goals and objective ways of measuring that as you go, as you go along. We need to change that, of course. And what you'll see, mirror is a lot of great work in this, the biggest cities in this country. And this is a big, big word. The first is definition of accountability, from Wikipedia. But you can see, it talks about migration to water, to explain, and be answerable for results and consequences when it comes to looking at data. Our collective challenge to create here a culture of accountability, to make sure that everyone up and down the line knows exactly what they're responsible for and what work is at for them, how to measure the success of our district. And for it to work, it needs to be systemic, it has to include, again, all stakeholders, central office, principals, teachers, students, families in the park, all of us, in part, in this work. Fair, accurate, coherent, transparent, and it must be lived, meaning that allow for, for adjustments as you go along. If this is the goal, it's sixty percent next year, and you actually reach sixty-two, I would push that for higher level as you go along. So very simply, moving from a culture of compliance to a culture of performance. So it's not just meeting state requirements, but how you go beyond that. Moving from a military definition of success to a shared definition of success, if you underline the word of share. From one side, it's all, from one of unanimity to one of difference gear. Not every school's the same, not every child's the same, but what should be the same for everybody, the goals cannot be the same for everyone. Moving from focus on just absolute performance to one that focuses on absolute performance and value progress. Because a school has a ninety percent graduation rate does not mean it's a big school. You have to take a look at kids coming in, what they're performing at, to what they're bringing in for four years later. So value adds, treatment is the important. The same way to be able to school has a large numbers of special ed and media outlets, and they have a fifty percent graduation rate, those that are not successful. See what they've done, and what they're getting. One, moving from decisions based on anecdotes and whim, to one based on data. And again, it doesn't just mean numbers, they have to act by this, and other kinds of data as well. So PR is performance management, and what does it look like in terms of looking at students, families, and community? Today, in our cabinet, we define what we talk, what we mean by this. One for students, is that students need to be able to know what are the expectations, and they should be able to look at it before telling you, how are they doing, and where they're struggling, and where they can improve. They should be able to look at exams, and be able to know exactly where their expectations are, where they're succeeding at, to be part of that kind of conversation. Parents need to be able to take a look at our scorecard, how we podcast online, and be able to understand, really, what's expected of their children, and how they can support them in the learning process. And that's the part of the work, and of course, community is very, very important. Going from universities, accepting students, making sure our transfer, everything else is transparent, and meaningful to them, to business, to the larger community. You wonder how you define this, but for people to be able to listen and see exactly what's going on. You spend quite a deal of time around, around this. If you're living, saying you're off the code, and you want to move around this, how do you know which school's great? How do you know how much this is doing? What do you, what do you look for, what do you find? Many of us know, if you try to dive into the state website, it's true, this is a good thought, we really understand the resources, who are not doing well, where I should move to, and not do. We all know young people, young professionals, when moving to communities, school's a big piece of the conversation. So for them to get a transparent way of looking, finding that kind of vision, is what we aim to do. Jeanette, do you want to come up here?
And, yep, and the way we're going to try and do this now is to create a dashboard. This is your whole picture. As you can see how big it is, with all the data, and everything across the state and across our district, these are all the things that are going on. But we want to try and pinpoint our one place, East High School. How is East High School doing? We see ELA going on, we have math, and we have a daydreamer. The next, and what we want to know is what? What are we doing in the ELA eleven? What's happening with the math class? What is our daydreamer doing? Does he not get it? Is he bored, or is he just confused? What does the building performance demonstrate? What are these key factors that impact one to four? We go to looking at a dashboard that is live data, immediate, and what we want. And when we go to the Q and A meetings all the time, that's the question, it's always this. Why can't we get it? Why can't we see a school and what the school is doing? The dashboard will help us do that, and the school's scorecard will give a big picture of what actually is happening in our district. What is the criteria? The data dashboard should match the criteria in the school's scorecard. This should link with, allow schools to use their formative analysis and the dashboard monitoring, so that the schools can see on a continuous basis what's happening in their school at any given time, so that they can immediately correct it, take care of it, and proceed down to get, to get the scores up, and to help their individual students. What we see is the formative analysis, which is really the dashboard, it's informing instructions right down into the classroom, down to the nitty gritty of the student. And then, in the end, the school's scorecard will tell us about the summative analysis. Let's look at the whole big picture. Let's see what the school actually is doing. And like Mr. Presard said, a ninety percent doesn't mean that that school is doing the best that it can do. It mean, it may mean that the first school that's doing fifty percent is outperforming that school because they have a lot more obstacles. So what does our data dashboard look like? It's going to be a pictorial picture of, of representation of the aggregated data. What does that mean? It means that the data, which we've been giving on a one-page sheet with all our little numbers, will now become a pictorial version, so that all schools can see immediately what they are doing. The school, it will look like this, Philadelphia has one right now, and this is what it looks like. You can go in at any given time, and you can see how your school is doing in any subject, for their grades, what a teacher is doing, and what the classroom is doing. Oakland also is doing that, and they have right down to the nitty gritty, where the parent can actually get out and see how their child is doing. Can see the scores and what's going on in that building for that teacher. You can also see, as a district, how the district is doing at this level, so that we can immediately see what's happening to our schools, and where do we need to put the resources. When you go down to the nitty gritty, you'll see the, to the student, you'll see a paragraph of how he's performing over time. You'll look at the UTE, the DRA, any formative assessments that are going on in the school, you'll see how that child is doing. So we actually know, are we reaching that child? The school's scorecard will take the whole, two-fold, it will take the whole picture of what's he having been on a daily basis, and go at the end with one snapshot, and say, this is the outcome of what you've done all year long. Only near a few schools or districts, large districts are doing it. They're trying to implement it in Baltimore, Houston, and Washington. We've already looked at Houston's, we saw New York City in a presentation, and what, how they're coming up to their final end. New York public schools, this is what it's looked like. We talk about the school environment, we talk about the school performance, the progress, and additional credit, the overall score of the school. This was designed with stakeholders sitting at the data table and deciding what really needs to be in a school scorecard, so that we can see what's going on in that school. This is the, this is the, when you aggregate it up, this is exactly the different pieces in each one of the school environments, including attendance and suspensions for your school environment, the performance at your New York State test, but also about the growth that the student is making. A school may not be making AYP because it's not performing at the what the state says, but that school may be showing more growth around compared to its other schools, doing much better. What would we want to look at? When I looked at all the different schools that are doing this, the districts, these are some of the aspects that they're looking at. Ethnicity, English language learners, special ed, mobility, poverty. They're looking at the grades of students. They're also looking at the test scores. They're looking at school climate, which is very important in, in a school. Teacher attendance, student attendance, suspensions, and that would be disaggregated with the student subgroups. Measuring extracurricular participation. Surveys to ask higher expectations high. Are college prep, is, are they preparing to be a global work, to enter the workforce as a global student? Respectful practices, are they supportive and responsive to their culture and their racial background? The other thing is the building conditions, are my floors clean? Are the tables in my cafeteria clean? Is there toilet paper, soap, and paper towels in the bathroom? Special programs, even though we have a lot of programs, what are they doing on the end side of these programs? Are we producing graduates to enter the workforce so that they're ready for whatever is out there when they graduate in, in either twelve to forty, whatever length they're here? The secondary performance accountability areas, we're gonna look at things like advanced placement. How many of our students actually get the credit for those advanced placements and then go to college? We want to look at advanced regions diplomas, or regions diplomas. How many of our students who are in these programs actually accomplish their goals? Graduation rate, dropout, what's our timeline? Phase one, we're gonna start right now. We're starting right now, we're putting our committee together, and we're gonna take a look at some of these pieces of what do we want a school's scorecards to look like, and what do we want that dashboard to have? Phase two will be in the winter, when we call for vendors. Scorecards, we're going to have the same phase, because both are gonna be working simultaneously, because what we have with the scorecard has to be in that dashboard in order to move it over, so that it can analyze all of it. This will give the question real-time data in a timely manner, so that everyone can see the school, and everyone can judge what's really going on in their buildings. Any question? Any question?
Did you learn the job from, from today's?
Whoops, here I go again. I sort of like this. How dare they say we're not transparent, where do I work?
Do you have anything else?
This has got to be a violation of the open meeting law.
Here's Johnny, no, this is good. Um, questions for the superintendent? I'll just say that I really appreciate the way this has been rolled out, looking forward to hearing how it will work. I think, I especially like that we're even looking at the school environment, because I think sometimes we forget that the environment of the school can ac- actually may have a determining factor on how our students do, how clean the schools are, whether or not there's toilet paper and, and soap in, in the bathrooms. I think that's important, I'm glad that that is part of the overall, the overall structure that you're looking at putting together with this dashboard, so thank you. Commissioner Powell?
My observation is that I can see that you're looking to do state-of-the-art reporting. And even before we had state-of-the-art reporting, we had the best that the district could put together, very much thanks to Mrs. Silver's work in, in the Research and Testing Department. The, the real test, however, will be when the committee observes that data, and someone can actually ask, answer the question, so what are we going to do differently? And that's always been the sticking point in the district, it's been all about pulling the data together, pulling the data gatherer, do we have everything? But folks haven't made that fundamental shift towards looking at what that data means and what you can do with, with that knowledge.
It really is, is a fantastic point, and this is where we talk about adjustment and intervention. It's one thing to have a lot of information, but you've got to ask the right questions, and you've got to know what to do once you have sort of the, the problem identified. Right now, what we have a little bit too much of, not just in our district, but in too many districts across the country, is what many refer to as DRIP, data-rich, information-poor. This is a way for us to, to get at those, to mine all of the information that we know exists in our district, and present it in a way that's usable, not just to the public, to inform the public, but to inform teachers and principals on what they need to do next. So yes, the execution, the intervention, the adjustment is where the work will really lay.
Thank you. Vice President White?
Yeah, just sort of piggybacking on your comments, Mr. President. I would also add, on a personal note, it is good to see, I mean, people often talk about, oh, well, the superintendent ought to be hiring people from outside, and, and identifying the best and brightest folks from across this country. Well, Jeanette is a perfect example of promoting from inside. And I tell you, she's only been on the job two days, and she talks about quality assurance, but I, I watched her during quality assurance, and I'm gonna be honest with you, I thought at times she was frustrated not being able to do the job that she wanted to do, and I see her now as being unleashed. And that is so encouraging, it is so encouraging to see that, and I look forward to your reports in quality assurance. Congratulations. Well deserved.
And if I may just piggyback on that, one of the things that we did in this reorganization was to painfully go to a lot of people to find those diamonds, and make sure they were shining. Not to just bring people from the outside, but to look at the talent that we have within the building, and to allow people to come out. Yes, the, the job is to, my job anyway, is to find the best musician and unleash them, and I think we found a gem, thank you. And by the way, sorry, just, just what I think, and of course, once Ms. Burgos gets settled, and after she comes on the 22nd, we'll come back in prison as well, on the wonderful work we know she's gonna be doing for us as a district.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Um, I was just gonna say, it looks like a picture's worth a thousand words, and it's so much easier when you can actually see data and see that picture rather than read it. So that is absolutely fantastic, and then, what a great job that Jeanette did. And it looks like you do have two diamonds, and you truly have a class act in Gladys. And I want to thank you for making sure to have a diverse cabinet, because, let me tell you, Gladys is gonna be a mover and shaker, and we're excited to have her too.
Commissioner Brennan?
Um, nothing to, you can't improve on silence, don't try to.
Thank you.
This is fine. You've all, you've all said it very well.
Mr. Superintendent, that concludes your report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you, we'll move to board committee reports. I, I have a very brief president's report. I also just wanted to welcome to the district Gladys Burgos, and congratulate Jeanette Silvers on her new, new title and job here. Gladys was my counselor in college, and I know, and, and I graduated, so. So, so, so that shows how great she is. She got me through U of R. So congratulations to both of them. I know that they will be tremendous, tremendous assets to the district. I also like to, I forgot to do this at the last meeting, congratulate Linda Stagels from the grants office. Is she here? Is Linda here from the grants office?
Yes.
If she could just stand up. Six million dollar Safe Schools Grant recently awarded to the district in collaboration with the county health department and county administration. And I believe it's a 1.5 million per year grant over four years. Anyone that's traveled to Washington DC with Linda or anywhere else where she's lobbying on behalf of this district, she constantly is fighting for the students of the district and I just wanted to congratulate her and the district for this, for that great grant that we'll be receiving. And I know just briefly, the funding will allow expansion of the primary mental health project to nine more sites, the expansion of the past promoting positive alternative thinking strategies, strategies to four more elementary school sites, the continuation of pilot sites and training components for the integration of schools and mental health systems, plus expansion to five new elementary sites, staff support for the mental health services contracts for the student and family support centers, expansion of the Ole Miss bullying prevention program to two new sites, plus school bus drivers training district-wide, school safety and security resources for training, equipment, and facilities audits, and planning and support for youth in transition back to schools for mental health care, incarcerations, and drug rehab. So this is a big deal, you know, and we got to do a better job definitely of patting ourselves on the back when we do these things. So this is going to be great. Also, I wanted to, I had the opportunity along with Commissioner Campos to attend the August graduation event for Tuesday at Hockstein for students. There were over 150 new graduates to the city school district. That was an absolutely tremendous event. Thank you to the superintendent and his staff for putting that on. I was honored to be there and those, and I believe those graduates will count in our cohort.
Yes.
So congratulations on a great event. We had a public hearing scheduled on September 4th for charter schools. That is canceled because from my understanding, the charter school has withdrew its contract for admission to the state. So there won't be a public hearing on the charter school because charter school, that new charter school will not be in existence at least this coming school year. So I guess that money will stay here at the district. Student report, I know school hasn't started yet, Mr. Lost, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, I actually do.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. So this year, the mayor's Youth Advisory Council, which is a council who advises the mayor, had a youth forum back in June. And what we did was we discussed youth priorities in action, basically what's, what are some issues that we can improve on and that are going on in our community and how we would go about fixing them because there are no quick fixes. So what I have in my hand right now is some reports for the board that we designed. So pass those down, I don't know if there's extras. Also, an update on SLC, Student Leadership Congress will be starting this September. And so far, I have to still send a letter to principals. And we have a set schedule based on when our meetings are going to be, monthly meetings. We have come up with a date. Our first meeting will be September 17th at 3:30. We are still trying to decide where, whether it's going to be in the superintendent's conference room. We have decided on some activities for the following year. Every other month, we have decided to partner with Wilson Commencement Park, a grade, a classroom in K through two, the clean sweep that we've done in the past, PSA. And this year's public service announcement that we are trying to focus on is mutual respect between a teacher and a student and appropriate conduct. We have decided to come up with a monthly segment on Students First TV show and our Students First newsletter that goes out to parents and families in the district, basically giving an update. But I think it's also very important that we have youth input in our newspapers and on TV to get some positive publicity support. And we've decided that if we can do a drive, we are going to support some type of elementary school. And as well as the Home Library Project, which is a program that we are trying to begin at School 22, Mr. Bizard and I were able to sit down and discuss a program that we can bring in for third graders at School 22, which would be a reading program to improve reading grades and get mentoring experience. So we are looking forward to reading to them. And I extend my congratulations on the graduation on Tuesday, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Lost. And also, I want to commend you for your composure and your presence yesterday at our meeting with our bargaining units and parents. You did a great job and we look forward to having you at future events and welcome as our student rep to the board. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And you're sitting next to Commissioner Powell, who is our senior board member. So if you have any questions or anything, I would urge you to seek out Commissioner Powell. She's been here and she knows the board inside now.
Thank you. She's guiding me right now.
Commissioner Powell and the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Our Finance Committee was supposed to be last week, but due to attendance issues, it did not happen until Tuesday. And so I had to miss the graduation, as did Commissioner Elliott, unfortunately. Our usual agenda review involved reviewing financial reports along with budget amendments this month. The Finance Committee did approve the financial reports and I move that the board accept those financial reports this time.
Is there a second to receiving the financial reports? Second. Second by Vice President White. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the monthly financial reports, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commensurate with those financial reports, Resolutions 145, I'm sorry, Budget Amendments. There are two, three budget amendment resolutions that involve moving, essentially subtracting some funds from the grants revenue and adding them to the operations side of the budget. The issue was that we knew that we were going to have to repay AP money, but our accounting department anticipated that those funds would come out of, would be subtracted from our operating aid. When the check actually came, it was subtracted from our grant aid. So budgets had to, had to be altered to reflect that fundamental change. There were other changes to the budget. You should have had an opportunity to look at those. So altogether, we considered Resolutions 145 through 161 and Resolutions 201 through 203. The budget, the budget resolutions are 201 through 203. Resolutions 145 and 146 are final payments to our facilities and capital improvement. Resolutions 147 through 157 are procurement and supply contracts. Resolutions 158, 160, and 161 are other contracts, specifically several contracts for Bosse's Two. In addition to that, though, we considered Resolution 159. We had a dilemma of not having a full committee and not being able to actually get a majority vote on, on the Encompass contract. The board president has made a decision to leave it in the resolution packet as his, is his prerogative as the chair. He determines what the agenda is. And I fully support that as a finance chair. The disagreements in the committee, I don't think reflect the merits of the resolution nor the will of this body. So I'm pleased to see 159 still on the, on the agenda. Also, Resolutions 156, you have an altered copy on yellow paper. I would ask at this time that, I move that we substitute this version for the one in your packet. The Finance Committee made some recommended changes, including the specific identification of Project Lead the Way in a description of what commodity it is that we're contracting for. This is not even really a technical change, but one of simply making it more clear to any observer what it is that we're voting on. So I move that the yellow copy be substituted for the copy in our packet.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Brennan. Any discussion around substituting the 156 yellow copy, which is at, you'll see that the day is for the one that is in the packet that you received? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. 156, as the copy in front of you, will be substituted in the packet.
Thank you. And the only remaining item on my report is that our next meeting will be September 18th at 5:30 PM, right in this space here.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Questions for Commissioner Powell and the Finance Committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Quality Assurance Committee and Vice President White.
Buzz is telling me it's time to give my report. First of all, Mr. President, to my colleagues, let me apologize for the informal attire, but I literally just came from Philadelphia where I dropped my middle child off at Temple. And it was certainly an emotional moment and I think it deserves just a brief moment of reflection here. I literally, I literally just got back into town. I thought it was appropriate that I at least shave. And if you see me do this, I'm wiping the blood off from how I nick myself. So I did do every, do everything humanly possible to get here on time and in a presentable manner. But I left the T-shirt on and the jeans on because I thought it was appropriate to at least mention that as we continue to make progress on this issue of graduation, we have to sort of continue to move the bar. We've talked a lot about graduating our seniors and, and thanks to Manny Rivera and Bill Cola and Superintendent Jean-Claude Bizard, we've made some progress. But we must also be mindful that the goal is not, and I've heard Jean-Claude say this, is not just graduation. The goal is getting our kids to a point where they can go on to college, vocational training, and so forth. So I, I wear this shirt to suggest to you that we're moving in the right direction. We clearly are. My two children, I have three children, my two that have attended city schools are evidence of that, that this is a good district. And in that respect, I wear the T-shirt to say thank you to the principals. One of them is sitting in here today, she's now no longer principal, of my children, the teachers at Monroe Number 12 School and Wilson Magnet High School, the counselors, and yes, even to the board members who were here, who but for their support, my children would not have made it. My children never complained that they did not have books, that they did not have the right teachers. That would include, of course, President Evans, Commissioner Brennan, Commissioner Elliott, Commissioner Powell. They were here during the four years that my two children were going to school and I, I definitely owe them a debt of gratitude. Finally, I would note that I felt satisfied when my daughter graduated. But there was no sense of completion. Today, along with perhaps thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands of parents throughout this country, I felt a sense of completion. And to the district, I say thank you. Now, I do have some business to take care of here. The Quality Assurance Committee met on Wednesday, August 20th at 4:00 PM to discuss the presentation on the Destiny Program and the Career and Technical Education Programs. I would also like to note, without casting any aspersions on the current administration, who I think is doing a mighty effort to make sure our career and technical education programs are in place for our students, that apparently 15 out of the 26 career and technical education programs that the district offers are not approved by the state. Now, let me remind you, the only reason why we know this is we have an administration that's on top of this, all right? At least three of these programs are not approved due to staffing issues. We as a district need to do a better job making sure that all of our CTE programs are approved. It would also be helpful if the district can provide us with a timeline on which we can expect approval of the remaining programs. We as a committee, and I'm sure all my colleagues on the board would agree, agree with me on this, the one of the ways we keep kids in school is to have them interested and engaged in educational programming. And CTE program is one of the ways to do that. I would also like to note for folks' consideration, the Quality Assurance Program Committee is trying to make sure that we have a diverse agenda and that we solicit input from throughout the community. Dennis Richardson, someone who is well-known in this community, who is head of Hillside, and his staff will provide a brief presentation on the Hillside Work Scholarship Program on October the 9th at the Quality Assurance Committee meeting. The next Quality Assurance meeting will be Thursday, September 8th at 5:30 PM. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Vice President White. Questions related to the Quality Assurance Committee report? Okay, Commissioner Campos and the CIGR Committee.
The Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, we met on August 12th and Commissioner Elliott actually joined us. And although we are pursuing avenues to having the dropout age raised from 17 to 18, we're also asking that the issue be referred to the Quality Assurance Committee for research on the potential impact on academic achievement. And Commissioner White, he's a member of both committees and I'm sure he'll facilitate it just fine. We're also drafting a letter to our federal representatives regarding amendments to the Americans with Disabilities Act, which for public school systems could amount to a new unfunded mandate. And the Council of Great City Schools is opposed to the measure as it could impose new costs for the district without demonstrated benefits for students. And I'd like to personally thank Linda Stagels for attending the meeting and also keeping us informed on these items. And our committee has asked that President Evans contact Council President Santiago regarding a joint session to discuss how we can collaborate regarding state funding, maintenance of effort, mayor control, truancy, and other issues that affect the city and the district. And we'd like to see a first joint session take place in late September or early October. And one of the new agenda items that we had talked about was there's a program called Five by Five in Denver, in which children are exposed to at least five cultural experiences by the time they're five years old. And this is a terrific example of what city, the city and the school district, when working in partnership, can accomplish for the good of the children. And CIGR is looking at how we can initiate something similar here and in looking at what the superintendent is focused on, whether it be in secondary or through the seventh, eighth, and ninth grades, there might be some opportunity there. So, and our next meeting is September 15th at 5:00, and everyone is welcome to join us. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And it was an action item. I will refer to the Quality Assurance Committee, the dropout age increase. Also, I will state that I spoke with folks over at city council. They are interested in having a joint meeting. And we will also revive, Commissioner Powell is probably the only one that was here when we used to have these, we will be reviving the old three-on-three meetings where three, three board members go and meet with three city council members on a quarterly basis to talk about issues of mutual concerns. They are interested in doing that. So we will work with our secretaries to get that back on the calendar. Commissioner Brennan?
Just a quick question. These meetings with city council are commendable. Is there, is the mayor going to be involved in any of these meetings or is there any interest?
I'm not, not sure about if you wanted the mayor involved in.
My understanding was that was a clear intent.
Yeah.
But I'm sure he'd be invited.
Lot to say about the school district and, you know, there's, I think, a lot more common ground than maybe is generally supposed in the.
The more the merrier.
So we can also extend an invitation to him as well.
If I could just time to say, historically, it has not included the superintendent or the mayor. Historically, it's included president of the board and council, finance chairs of each, and one representative from the administration each. But historically has not. That doesn't mean it can't.
President, yes, I was just, I just want to say again for emphasis that I really care less what we did historically. The discussions that we have had regarding, you know, what City Hall has had to say, but you know, including everybody's favorite subject, the whole issue that comes up in the legislature every year with respect to mayororal control, I think the public would really appreciate, before we took away their right to elect their board, if the mayor who they esteem and the board that they elected, as well as the city council members, would sit down and make an effort to sit down and talk. I think they'd be appalled to know that that conversation has not taken place, not in the two and a half years I've been here, not once. And, and I don't think that's a good thing. I don't think that's in the public interest. And so I think there's an urgent need to include him in these discussions in a, in a friendly way, in an amicable way, and hopefully a constructive way. a friendly way, in an amicable way, and hopefully a constructive way. I think the premise is that, is that there is a great deal more common ground, and as we all know from all of the rumors about the supposed differences that we have and the acrimony that's supposed to attend them, we know the relationship is much better than it's often reported or than people suppose it is. And I think that would be the case as well with, with the mayor, with city council. But the first step is that people have to sit down and talk to each other. It's, it's so, I feel kind of funny having to kind of state the obvious with such a sense of discovery, but we need to do it.
Thank you. And Commissioner Brennan, we're up to you in the Policy Committee report.
I was, we, we met on, on August 11th, a few days after the special meeting on August 7th, and we acted on three items, we have forwarded, which we forwarded to the board on the 21st of August with attached materials. Those include an amendment to policy 6725, the Responsible Bitter Policy. This amendment's being forwarded as an information item with discussion and a vote anticipated at our September 25th meeting. I'm sure Commissioner White will be very happy to hear this. It was his proposal, and we, there have been a great many glitches and delays, but it's on track now, and we thank him. Policy 5300, the Code of Conduct, is in your dais packet, the complete document. We're forwarding this as an information item with discussion on it anticipated for September 25th and a vote on October 23rd. And also, as an information item, the Superintendent Regulation and Discipline, Regulation of Discipline and Intervention Proposal is also forwarded only as an information item. We anticipate more action on it next month. If there are substantive revisions, I would expect that they would go back to the Policy Committee for review. Policy also, the Policy Committee also discussed the Board's policy manual. We're arranging for a representative from Erie Bosse's One to make a presentation to us regarding its policy manual update services for our next meeting, which is September 8th. We anticipate a resolution for the full board regarding the proposed update for the September 25th meeting, and we will keep you all informed. We are not calling a committee meeting of the whole for September 8th, but we strongly ask and encourage that as many members as can attend for input on this important process. And that concludes your report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brennan. Questions for Commissioner Brennan or comments? Commissioner Powell?
Commissioner Brennan, is the timetable anticipated that we would, this would be a discussion item in September and then voted on in October? Or are we going to discuss this tonight and vote on it in September?
Discussion, it's, since there are revisions being contemplated, we would discuss it next month and vote the following month.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I have one last.
One question.
Oh, oh, is it questions around policy?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Campbells and then Commissioner, Vice President White. Commissioner Campbells?
I just wanted to clarify, one of the items that was moved to policy from QA was the possibility of a name change, moving, changing it from excellence in student, or changing it from quality assurance to excellence in student achievement. And the mere purpose is, is these are students, and let's start talking about that. Quality assurance is such a corporate term that it's just like widgets. But anyway, so it was transferred, I know, to policy, and I believe.
I can, I can speak to this, just perhaps helpfully. I have had no objection to anybody changing the names of any committees, but apparently, apparently the other two have, have felt that perhaps, and they can speak for themselves, that this was unnecessary. I, therefore requiring two votes for this to get out of the committee, simply we're not there. I would point out, you know, in as, in as, in as friendly and cheerful a way as possible, that we do retain the option, I think, under our rules, to suspend the rules if the majority of the board wishes to, to make this change. We could do that without it going through the committee if four board members feel there's a compelling justification to do that and wish to do it. But the opposition to it, I think, is, is in good faith, as is the proposal, and it's probably something we wouldn't want to spend a disproportionate amount of time fighting about, but I'll, I'll leave that to the rest of you.
Thank you. Anything, anything else, Commissioner Campbells on that?
I'd like to make a motion, if we could, to bring it to the full board next meeting under new business, if we could.
You can bring it up to, under new business at the next, at the next board meeting.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Commissioner, Vice President White?
Yeah. Just, Commissioner Brennan, thank you for forwarding what is proposed to be an amendment to policy number 6725. For those of you, I know we're going to talk about it next month, but for those of you who don't know, this is the Responsible Bitter Policy. It basically requires that the district have guidelines for public works contracts to make sure that the bidders are responsible. It listed a number of things, like you couldn't be in violation of OSHA, no criminal conduct, you weren't a responsible bidder if you engage in criminal conduct, if you, you weren't a responsible bidder if you lack proper certification. I had proposed that in addition to these eight or nine criteria that the district has to look at, that we add, and given my prior practice, this made perfect sense to me, any adverse determinations or administrative rulings by the EEOC or the New York State Human Rights Division. So if you've got contractors out there that are discriminating against people based on a decision by the federal government or New York State, they should be looked at. We should not be awarding, my opinion is, we should not be awarding contracts to contractors or bidders who have, who are in violation according to the federal government or New York State Department of Human Rights. This addition is a necessary addition. It perhaps changes the mindset of district personnel, that that, along with criminal convictions, is something that we're serious about. So I, I'm glad to see that the committee saw the wisdom of this, and, and I'm hoping that we have a spirited discussion on this, because this is, goes to the core of one of the reasons why I came to the board. We ought to make sure that we look at responsible bidders in terms of how they treat other people, whether they're black, white, women, or people of different age groups. And finally, I would be remiss if I did not thank Bob Smith, the district's able attorney who is assigned to these kinds of matters. He was able to do what I was not, that is, put this in the proper legal language so that it would make sense to everybody else. So thank you, Mr. Smith. I don't see you here, but please communicate my thanks to Mr. Smith. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions regarding committee reports in which you've heard? Okay, I have one last report in the absence of Commissioner Williams, who is taking his son to college, Princeton, I believe. I have his Audit Committee report here. The Audit Committee met on August 20th at 5:30 and reviewed the 2008, 2009 Office of the Auditor General's Risk Assessment and Audit Plan. The OAG Audit Plan will be submitted to the full board for review and approval at the September board meeting. The committee discussed the Audit, the Audit Committee Charter. The Audit Committee will evaluate the contents of the charter at the next committee meeting. The Audit Committee also, is also moving forward with accepting recommendations from the full board for the financial expert to join the Audit Committee. The financial expert is a non-salary position to the board to provide additional financial expertise to the Audit Committee. And that concludes Commissioner Williams's report. I'll get, moving on with the additional resolutions. I know you all want to get home and finish watching the Democratic Convention, which is on tonight. So we'll move right on to the considerations of resolutions. We'll begin with the Human Resources Resolutions, Resolutions 102 through 144. Those are Human Resources Resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. President, can I, can we separate Resolution 113?
Yes, if there is no objection, I will have 113, we will separate Resolution 113. Is there any objection to that? Okay. So we will vote on Resolutions 102 through 144 with the exception of 113, and we will vote on 113 separately. Thank you. Let us move with the adoptions of Resolutions 102 through 144 with the exception of 140, 102 through 144 with the exception of 113. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brennan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Discussions on Resolutions 102 through 144 with the exception of 113? These are Human Resources Resolutions, so if there were questions related to specific personnel, we would have to go into executive session. Hearing no, discussion around those. Our student rep doesn't vote on Human Resources Resolution, so I won't ask for an advisory vote, but I will ask all those in favor of Resolutions 102 through 144 with the exception of 113 to signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, anyone opposed? And are there any abstentions to 102 through 144 with the exception of 113? Okay, the ayes have it. We'll move to Resolution 113. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 113?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Discussions or comments around Resolution 113? Hearing none.
President, I'm just a quick.
Commissioner Brennan?
Apologize, I've got this all screwed up here. If this, since this, if there's to be any discussion of this, it would have to occur in executive session.
That's correct. But, but we will, we can't take questions that are germane to the topic, such as dates or that matter.
Okay. Do we anticipate discussing this in executive session?
No.
You don't think that's necessary? Okay.
Okay. We'll take a vote on 113. All those in favor of 113, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. No opposed, one abstention?
Yes.
Okay, we have one abstention.
Could our parliamentarian remind us the rules for abstentions? There has to be a clear fiduciary conflict of interest in order to abstain?
Or family member relationship or whatever. I don't know if Commissioner White wanted to express that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a funny surprise.
Yeah, right. If, if those are the rules, is a parliamentarian here?
Yes.
Okay. Is, is, just to confirm that, is that, is that required? Because that's not the basis of my abstention.
For school board members, unfortunately.
It's an anomaly in the law.
It's stated in our bylaws that the only reason we can abstain is conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest because a family member might be stated.
I was trying to be rather gracious with this, but that's not the basis for my abstention. I'll just leave it like that. I assume that's correct?
Okay. So you vote no or?
I vote no.
Okay. So the ayes have it, and we have one no, so that carries for one. Okay, we'll move on to Resolutions 193 through 200, which are also Human Resources Resolutions. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Moved by Commissioner Campbells. Questions or discussions around 193 through 200? Hearing none. All those in favor of 193 through 200, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I vote yes. The ayes have it. Mr. Superintendent, do you want to recognize the various appointments that have just been made?
Absolutely.
I hear some clapping.
Yes. Let me just start with 195. Our new executive director for English Language Learners, Ms. Lourdes Hodel, are you here? Congratulations. And 102, Sylvia Lloyd, Lloyd, I'm sorry, our new instructional director for school library. I believe we took, we stole her from Buffalo as well. She's not here tonight. And a number of assistant principals and others have been appointed. Should I? I'll be rather quick. Was Mary Ozetta, if you're here? Sean Walker, David Lincoln. Just stand up, stand up, stand up, stand up. Please rise. Thank you. Charles Smith, Rhonda Mauryan, Cheryl Donatella, Sharon Lee. Thank you. Sharon Lee, and forgive us, spell your name correctly. Noun's it. Kimberly Brock. Felicia Drizdel. Caterina Leone Manino, I think. No, okay. Julie Ozelli and William Conmiller. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations and congratulations on your new positions. We will now move on to Resolutions 145 through 146. 145 through 146 are educational facilities resolutions. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Campbells. Discussion around Resolutions 145 through 146?
Advisory.
Oh, yep. And, and if I, before I call the, call for the vote, an advisory vote by our student rep, how do you vote on 145 through 146?
I'm overwhelmed.
Yeah.
What was it, 145 through what?
146.
Final payments to facilities.
Oh, aye.
Okay. Hearing, no, no discussion on 145 through 146. All those in favor of approving 145 through 146, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. 145 through 146 are approved. Mr. Superintendent?
I forgot one name. Apologies, Mr. David Lincoln, if he's here. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Lincoln. That's a good last name. 147 through 157 are procurement and supply resolutions. Student advisory vote, what's your advisory vote on 145 through 147?
Aye.
157? Aye? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve 145, 147 through 157?
I'm sorry, I lost place, I lost our place.
Motion for 147, I'm looking for a motion to approve for 147 through 157. Moved by Vice President White?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Questions or discussions around 147 through 157? Hearing none. All those in favor of 147 through 157, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. 158 through 192 are other. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 158 through 192.
So moved.
Student advisory vote?
Aye.
Okay. Is there a second to 158 through 192?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President White. Discussion, questions around 158 through 192? Hearing none. All those in favor of 158 through 192, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. 201 to 203 are budget resolutions, which Commissioner Powell referenced in her Finance Committee report. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President White. Discussion around Resolutions 201 through 203? Hearing none. Student rep, what's your advisory vote?
Aye.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Commissioner Powell, would you like to read the gifts?
Oh, thank you so much, yes.
We want to thank those gifts.
You know, once upon a time, we had a board member specifically had the duty of, of announcing the lowering of the flag when we lost a member of our school families. I, I like this job a whole lot better. We have a host of gifts from various partners, starting with Diana Lancia, who donated $3,700 for the use of, to be used by the Drum of Visual Arts and Music Departments of School of the Arts. A gift of $1,000 from Macro International to help with instructional supplies at Charlotte High School. A gift from Day Automation Services for $1,500 for field trips for school number nine. $500 donation from Stan Tech for field trip opportunities at school 43. $650 gift from the American Council on Education to help with student testing and instructional supplies. Gift from M&amp;E Engineering of $1,000 for field trip opportunities at John Marshall High School. A $750 gift from IBC Engineering to be used by the Green Team at school 57. And a $501 grant from UGI Gas Mark for field trip opportunities at school 52. Additionally, a gift of Foam Core Plastics valued at $1,200 from Layered Plastics for various district art projects. I think that covers all the gifts, and I thank the community for their support.
Thank you for the gifts, and we. Thank you for the gifts, and we also thank you for your support. That concludes our resolution portion of this meeting. Thank you, colleagues, for your indulgence on those. Unfinished business from a previous meeting, we have a human resources resolution, Resolution 20809, number 16, which is unfinished business from the previous meeting. I would ask for a motion to table this on the advice of the superintendent, who is still working on this issue, and hopefully there will be some resolution around this soon.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brennan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. A table goes straight to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now, I didn't hear the ayes.
How did he give a sign? Get it out there.
Aye.
Got to go a little slower.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, any noes? Any abstentions? It's quiet as I've ever heard it on the days. So that will remain tabled. Under new business, is there any new business to come before the Board of Education?
President Evans, just briefly.
Yes, one second. Commissioner Powell?
You and I had a conversation, Mr. President, about the, being the voting delegate at the NISBA convention. I don't know if that requires a board vote. There are two of us attending. Alan Williams and myself are both attending NISBA.
Yes, I was going to ask for the board's indulgence to make Commissioner Powell our voting delegate at the NISBA convention, so that's one item of new business, and I'll get to that. And there was something else to it with the Monroe County...
There was, but in a, in follow-up to that, if I am the delegate, will the board trust my judgment on the various votes, or would you like me to provide a copy of the questions that are coming up for vote and bring the matters before the full board in some capacity?
I know last year, we trusted your judgment. I don't know what the...
Yes, you did.
And it was a catastrophe.
Taxes went up 150 percent now. So I don't know what the, what the pleasure of the board is. I know, I think I'm fine. We have, our board members do represent various organizations, so I don't have a problem with that. But can I just get a formal motion to...
We're pointing out, by the way, that the delegate is there, and here's the discussions that occur that we don't hear.
Right, exactly. So I would just like to get a formal motion to make Commissioner Powell our voting delegate at the NISBA conference.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Any other new business that I may have missed?
Well, there was the matter of the Monroe County School Boards Association.
Right, yeah, and I don't think we need to vote on that. I'm on the steering committee of the executive committee, also the Monroe County School Boards Association. It's very difficult for me to attend those meetings because we have so many of them, so I've asked Commissioner Powell to attend for me the steering committees, and she can update us as we come forward. For those of you that don't know, the School Boards Association is a tremendous resource. We don't use them enough. We definitely should use them a lot more. Judy Siegel and Jody Wadsworth are absolutely excellent over there, so in the spirit of us taking advantage of them and trying to use them to the best of our ability, I've asked Commissioner Powell to go and represent us there. Any other new business? Commissioner Brennan?
Just, just very briefly, and I probably should have raised this on the occasion of the superintendent's report, but we segued so quickly into the president's report, but I wanted to give the superintendent a chance to update all of us on two things, one of which was mentioned in a story this morning about the hotline, and perhaps explain that for people here who haven't been aware of it, and the other was to update the public on the appointment of the blue ribbon panel, for lack of a better word, to look into the testing issue.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, on the hotline and the testing?
Absolutely. It's a collaboration between the district and, of course, the Board of Education staff for people to really have access in a way that will not cause them to be harmed in any way by other members of the community. So people really far away to approach investigation in a much more rigorous and objective manner. If you remember in the past, our human resources really were the ones who handled a lot of the investigation. So moving that to professionals, whether they are in the board staff around with, I forgot her title.
Order General.
Order General, or through Jimmy Shepard in our Safety and Security Division, to really get people who know what they're doing on this kind of work as they work with legal in addressing whatever issues come up from staff or from the public. It really is a way to facilitate that conversation for a lot of people, so when you hear allegations, no longer do people have a fear of reprisals, so they have a way of getting that information to us and for us to investigate that in an objective manner. In terms of the testing, I have Kristen Barclay, who's working with us a number of different ways. She is meeting, putting the panel together. I believe they're meeting for the first time in about a week, and I'm sitting with them, and we anticipate closing this, hopefully, only a few weeks after. So the goal is to get this thing done as quickly as possible, so to begin to really get into the hood and see exactly what happened. And part of my hope, of course, is that they also look at the number of exams that we give our seventh and eighth grade kids to see if we are, in many ways, overtesting these two grades.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan?
A brief follow-up question regarding the panel. Are you satisfied that that panel will have full access to all of the documentation and ability to question the people involved, to get to the root of why this happened, how this happened? There is sometimes, fairly or unfairly, sometimes suspicion of blue ribbon panels that tend to take touchy subjects and bury them, and panels that don't have the authority or the access to the documentation and to the people they need to get to the bottom of it, and I wanted to, I've had that concern myself, frankly, and I don't know that that's the case this time, but what would you say to reassure people?
I'd completely reassure them. In fact, Kristen Barclay, who's the chief liaison to the panel, is an attorney, and as you know, attorneys tend to be the kinds of people who are very objective and will not...
Who you been talking to?
And well dressed, yes.
Well dressed, exactly. But, you know, I have complete faith in Ms. Barclay and the fact that she's not the kind of person who means words, and she would push on the organization to make sure that they're getting exactly what they're looking for.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the superintendent on those two items? Thank you. We look forward to the resolution. And I would also add on the whistleblower policy, and it's important to note that the phone line is only a supplement, an add-on, extra step, in addition to our own whistleblower policy, which we passed back in 2005. We now have, we will now move to speakers on other than agenda items. We have four speakers. Each speaker will have three minutes. You will hear a beep when your time has expired, and I will ask you to conclude your remarks, so that way the following person, people can come forward and deliver their remarks. Before the speakers come up, I do want to announce the next meetings of the Board of Education. September 4th, 2008, there's a special meeting here at 6:00 PM, and at 7 o'clock, there's a public hearing on the contracts for excellence. I will note that this is the third meeting that we're having on, as related to contracts for excellence. This is not the first one, this is the third one we're having, and we're having it just to make sure that everyone that wants to participate can participate. And then there's the Board Business Meeting on September 25th, 2008, at 6:30 PM, and if any other questions that you may have, please visit the board's website, rcstk12.org/boe. Our first speaker is Mr. Jason Brown. Mr. Brown, are you here? Please come forward, Mr. Brown, if you're here. Okay, thank you. Is Mr. Ron Ring here? Mr. Ring?
I'm here.
Glad to see you. Come on up.
I want to honor the Honorable Jan Basila, who's passed away, who used to grace these presidiums or this room with her candid comments about the school board. Student involvement in formulating curriculum, including these courses. World peace, resolve conflicts peacefully with the United Nations' interaction. Arms control, Cold War arms race is fortunately now over. More self-defense. Affordable housing, need for public works program. Daycare at work, study in recreational places. Healthcare, universal healthcare. Education, learn towards everyone being able to afford their necessities and survival of all of us. Cooperative economics, right, left, middle ground synthesis. The left, real need to teach in U.S. schools towards more group process. Protest for peace in Middle East, Afghanistan, Iraq, the Sudan, Colombia, Dorza, and worldwide. Teach ecology, protect the environment. Teach peaceful process, conversation, dialogue, debate, negotiation, and arbitration. Research problems, synthesize opposing views. Integrate best of each into a new thesis. Rational reason. Peacemakers. Mr. Mahatma Gandhi and Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who hopefully do rest in peace and that we can work for peace in their loving honor. Tonight is the 45th anniversary of Dr. King's "I Have a Dream" speech in Washington. Love your neighbor as yourself. Lord Jesus principle. Universal love. Love all of humanity, respect each of our worth and humanitarian spirit. Free love, help one another to feel better. Massages, kind words, birth control, meditation and medication. Constructive dissident. Critical analysis towards peaceful answers. Peace, transcendental prayerful meditation. Yoga, exercise, meditation. Mantra, single words or phrases one says to themselves towards a more peaceful spirit. Thought statement, sentences one says to themselves towards a more peaceful spirit. Aerobic dancing, exercise, meditation, music. All towards inner soul commitment to peaceful coexistence evolution, to ease tension and eliminate violent episodes through spiritual values of respect, spiritual love, concern, listening, and dialogue ability. I got just a little bit more. Can I finish?
Please conclude your remarks.
Okay. Religion, interfaith ecumenical, agnostical, Christian witness interfaith. I just hope we'll see more peaceful spirit in the schools in terms of theory, like get the left into the schools. Get peaceful spirit. Have peace movement people come in to confront roti, at least to have some equal time idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ring.
You're welcome. Thanks for the chance to be here.
No, we're glad you're here. Salvatore Timpani. Salvatore Timpani here? Mr. Timpani? Okay, we'll move to our last speaker, Charlie Richardson. Mr. Richardson here?
I'm going to give Mr. Shepard the night off. I will not take the full three minutes. But I do want to say, Mr. Evans, evening.
Good evening.
Missioners.
Good evening.
And especially, our superintendent of schools. Every week, something better is happening. I had the occasion of a family that I work with that unfortunately, they have no transportation, couldn't get here tonight, had a 17-year-old daughter ready to drop out of school, and also a 12-year-old that you thought he was ready to go to college, but he can't read. I brought to the attention, after being stood up by both principals, Mr. Bizard, that he offered at the last meeting if I would leave and get off, so saves the taxpayers money for arresting me, he came down and said that he would be glad to speak about what I was talking about. But I will tell you what action we're taking. We were able to meet with him in his office out of his busy time. I don't know where he got the time, but he made it. It brought this family right together, and it's setting up education for both these children. And these kids are really delighted. They wanted to come tonight, but due to the fact of the lateness and that, not having transportation, weren't able to. The second thing I want to do is congratulate him on his hotline. This is something that's been needed for a long period of time. And the only question that I have on it, did we check to see if there's a company here in Rochester that could do that instead of having to come out of Georgia? You know, we got Paytech here and that, that's going to grow, but having a little problem right now, and there's some other companies, I just don't know if they would have the same system, but we'd ask that you'd please take a look at it. The other thing is for our young lady, that I don't know how she does it in the community, but everything, every place that I go, that she's speaking in that she does dynamic work. And I'm glad that the board is now listening to her, give her a chance for a vote. I want to read something here. It says, "Students changing their community one public policy at a time." Anybody seen that article? Now I'm going to give the Board of Education a test. You know what tests are and that, right? And I did not give you a script sheet so that you could cheat. I want to ask you, what is lesson study? Does anyone know? Well, we should really look into this, because the article is right here. As you know, my wife was formerly a teacher, and it's in the Teacher Edition of September 2008. It's the most wonderful thing in the world, and it's what a lot of youth has been telling us. Have the teacher involved. What does the youth want to do? What do they want to do? Know ahead of time to know how to teach to them. And unfortunately, the report is coming out that the explorers did in Rochester, not many of the city schools completed it, and I'll be bringing a report. I was hoping it was finished today, but it's not, but I'll be bringing it for you for the next meeting. Thank you so very much. Superintendent Bizard, I'll tell you, you just keep that up, and I'll tell you what, you'll be president after Obama's out.
Charlie, I wasn't born in this country. I can't have it.
We'll change the Constitution. Thank you. Speakers, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Hi, nice to meet you.
You bring me to dinner?